The meeting of the Board of Mayor and Selectmen and Select Women. Work session, September the 2nd, 2025, 5:30 PM. This is an informal meeting.
By being an informal meeting, it's an opportunity for the Board of Mayor and Selectmen to receive information, to ask questions, and hopefully, from the information received and the questions asked, that we will be able to make intelligent decisions. Do want to welcome all you who have come to attend our board meeting in person, as well as those who may be watching us by social media. Being an informal meeting, we have an agenda, and we're going to proceed with that agenda. We first have comments from, uh, Easter William Crockett, is he here? Not here. Okay, um, Mr. Lee Young, is he here?
Yes.
Okay, come to the podium, Mr. Young.
Yes, I'm here talking about water bill. The other day I came out and cut my water off, I hadn't been looking at the money, and I had to pay the bill, which I had paid, and same priority that I do every month. It's the last 10 years I've never been late. But they wound up making me pay a hundred forty-seven dollars plus another twenty-five after my bank check. And I don't think that's right. I usually pay my bill about the fifth or sixth of every month, when I go to the post office, then off with the eighth, the month they fall on. Like, this month, I haven't got any. And I don't think that's right. What if I'm out of town? Wrong picking.
Selectmen, hi. Um, so for this concern, has all the process of Janika seen it? And has the city, uh, city clerk slash C A? You're welcome. Have they seen it, made a decision on this?
Let's make sure we don't let something to somebody's title. She is the city clerk, she is not city clerk slash C A. There's nothing in our minutes that would reflect that, so let's not throw something out that's not relevant. Did you talk to the young lady in the office there, by the office manager, by the name of Janika Robinson?
I can't recall the name, but she just told me to get it after drop off. And, uh, they didn't get mine out of there. I have written, have a copy of my check.
Okay.
And also, my bank, I worked into that check, they owe that check for one year, and they charged me twenty-five dollars.
Okay, well.
And I have never seen it from my pocket.
Ms. Jessica, have you dealt with this gentleman?
I have not.
Okay, Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Jessica, look at Ms. Jessica. You need to get with Ms. Jessica and work that out, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
But if you need my assistance, please let me know.
But first go to Ms. Jessica, okay?
Thank you.
Next on the list, Horn CPA. Uh, we have three. Can you give us an update from Horn?
Afternoon.
Good afternoon. Doing good.
I'm Wes Winborn, I'm the partner that's been working on this account. This is Grant Jackson and Cody Hall, so they've been working on it as well. So, to give an update, I know you've seen our faces a lot, these two guys.
I see those two all the time. You every now and then.
So, we're through with nineteen, we're through with twenty. And when I say through, so what we've done is we've gone in the system, made sure that the balance is in the, in AS400, max the audited financial statements that we're given. And so, nineteen, that required some adjustments to get it there. So, we worked through, we made all, made sure all the balance sheet accounts had proper documentation backing up what the numbers were on all of its statements. Then we took the balances at the end of nineteen, brought them forward into twenty, to make sure that, because when we looked at twenty, there had some beginning balances, but there were some that were not. So, we got that into twenty, rolled that forward, and then we started making, uh, tying in our documentation for our 2020 balance sheet accounts. And we got through all of that, we were missing some information there, we kind of ended up having to reconcile ourselves, which is fine. Well, we got all that adjusted in there. We had, I don't know, a hundred terms, a lot, to get it to where it should be. So, you know, twenty matches the audited statement, except for the cash balance. There was more cash, uh, that should have been recorded on the audited statement than the audited statement check. So, we felt good about the adjustment for that. Now, we're just kind of sitting and waiting for y'all's approval to move forward for twenty-one. You know, the only way these guys can reconcile their bank accounts going forward currently is that the beginning balances roll forward each year. And so, let me give you an example. You got a bank reconciliation that's printed off the system. There's items that are cleared to make sure the check cleared the bank, or there are items that got on the bank statement, sometimes we find that weren't entered into the system. So, some of the typical ones that were found relate to, um, deposits. Water sewer deposits. So, there was a good beginning water sewer deposits that weren't recorded in the system, so we got those recorded in the system. There were transfers between bank accounts or between funds that weren't, or we got those recorded. There were payroll, uh, items that were, payroll, or payroll was processed, but it was not entered into the system. So, by the time we got all that figured out for 2020, there's another 1.8 million dollars of cash that was in the bank, and it's showing on all of the bank statement. So, in order to move forward, you gotta take the 2020 balances, make sure that the beginning balances in twenty-one start with 2020's end, and you roll it forward and reconcile it at the end of the year. So, we've learned a lot, that's the process, it's a lot of work. And so, we're also helping this gentleman, you know, come up with standard operating procedures, just answer your questions that she needs, and just be here to resource her.
Selectwoman.
Okay, Mayor, okay, I thought that, okay, he said he made the comment that he's waiting on us to give him the okay, but we thought we had a monthly schedule for you to go ahead and start on twenty-one, this should be a question.
Yeah, so, if you look at the way I kind of laid things out, I wanted to do nineteen and twenty, then I'll come back and kind of give you an update. And so, if you're good, we'll continue our process like we've done. You know, I think one of the comments that she made, well, how much is it gonna cost me? And I said, hey, we'll cap it at fifty. Well, I don't know. So, I've gone in there, we, we kind of got a rhythm to what we're doing. Uh, we kind of got, I think, you know, where things are, where things are, who people you should ask. And so, you know, I think going forward, we'd like to keep the hourly rate like this. But, we just need y'all's approval to move on to the next year.
Okay, you know that we have time scheduled with the state auditor's office?
I guess.
We've got to have an audit completed in four months, I think September, October. Okay, uh, how is, are you working with them, or how's that?
Yeah, I think Mr. Booker has, you know, asked for stuff. But, our deal is, we gotta get it reconciled first. You can take what you got, and you can issue an opinion on it, it's just not a clean opinion, it's an adverse opinion. You want the state auditor to take that? I don't want, I don't think I would, but he may. So, that's some, you know, clarifying information you may want to add.
Okay, also, we have Dr. Dupree here, uh, doing our financial statement and doing reconciliations. Uh, have you found her work to be sufficient?
Yeah, things that she's doing looks like to be outside the system. She may be reconciling stuff, but it's not in the system. Like, if she's, you know, her bank reconciliations don't tie back to what the balance is saying in the cash account, in the system. And I think that's the difference made that she's, I guess, needs to help you guys with. If that's what she's charged to do, is to make sure that she goes in there and ties out the balance in the system, and says it's a million dollars, and the bank rec says it's a million bucks. Right now, her bank rec says it's two million dollars, and what's in the system is three million dollars. There's a big discrepancy. And it's just like what he and I were talking about, was there's, there are deposits that aren't entered into the system. So, I don't know how she's reconciling from her end, but those transactions aren't entered into the system. So, when you run a, you know, a statement of position for all your, how, how well the city did for the, for the year, some of the transactions aren't even in the system, so how good can the financial accident be? They can't, because they're missing much data.
Selectman, hi. Um, so, I don't know, kind of echo the mayor's point, you know, we're at the point where weeks matter. Uh, we have a timeline, and we don't, what I'm hearing, we don't have authority to work on the books for the timeframe that we need, we need done. So, I think weeks matter, I think one day matters, and seven days matters. So, I would ask that we do special calls tomorrow or something to go ahead and give them authority, so they can keep working.
We already have authority, because we have, we have contracts with them.
Well, my deal was, I want them to have things one finished, talk to y'all about it, y'all are good with it, we'll continue to move forward.
No problem.
I got a question.
Sure. Selectman. The work you've done in nineteen, twenty, that's what you've done, right?
That's right.
Could Booker take that work and rewrite his audit to come out and not have an adverse opinion on the audit of no opinion?
Yeah, so.
Is that possible?
Nineteen to twenty have a clean opinion, twenty-one does not. It's got that adverse opinion, so yeah.
The last one, yeah.
Yeah, we finished twenty-one, he could reissue a clean opinion once we get through it.
Okay, so, what he's tasked with next is to get us an audit by November?
Yeah, I think he's working on twenty-two. My thing is, how can he work on twenty-two when that's like banks, it's not even here?
That's my point I'm trying to get to, is audit that he wrote before, that we have in our hand, is an audit of no opinion?
That's right.
An adverse opinion?
That's right.
Based on bad data?
That's right.
If he tries to do one based on what's available now in the system, it's gonna be another adverse opinion.
It's gonna be the same before.
Unless you do what you just did.
That's right.
All right, so we need to ask the state auditors, like, is an adverse opinion okay with y'all?
Yeah, that's right.
Then we can do this really quick.
Yeah, be a lot less work.
But you'd be really dumb.
I mean, it's, it's, it's not a clean opinion of no.
Right. Okay.
So, I echo Mr. Cunningham, that this needs, no, you already have it, right?
They already have it.
Let's rock and roll.
Rock and roll. Selectman Thompson.
I tell you about the 1.8 million you said that, that's over, how do you balance it if you still got the most money?
So, I mean, you gotta think back, this is 2020. Right now, it may have, balance is gonna be different. But, the, the report that was provided to you guys was, it didn't have all the information. So, the guy did all it, but I don't know, we, we asked and asked and asked for his work, but he never provided it to us. I don't know if he didn't audit the cash balance, and he did, and he didn't have a rec, he didn't have a reconciliation, I don't know. We went back and we did it ourselves. Then we did the balance on the cash accounts, and we made it different than what he had it before. So, until he produces something that we can agree the balance back to, we don't have anything else other than just go reperform ourselves. Booker. Bruno. Bruno. This way.
Twenty-one will be completed this month or next month?
We will, we will start all. I mean, we can, we can ask for the state auditor to do this more.
I think, Selectman, hi. I think there was a reasonable proposition by the floor to the community that by then, our term would be called up.
Yeah.
And that is a tighter deadline, I think, yeah, in my opinion.
Yeah, a lot of it comes down to how, how quick we can produce documents. We can get our hands on the documents we need to do our work. That's been a lot of the holdup. We didn't have bank statements, we had to call the bank, order bank statements. I mean, things like how readily documentation is available to us, how quick we can move.
I just want to let the board know that I will be working with the state auditor tomorrow. And so, just to answer your question, Mr. McKinsey, about the adverse opinion, they were aware of that one, and that wasn't acceptable. So, in regards to getting a, a new one, I will present that. In regards to stronger timeframe than what we already have, I will, you know, bring that to the attention of them. They will be here tomorrow to work with me.
Do you have all the accounts for twenty-one, twenty-two?
You said account, like bank accounts?
Bank accounts, all the information you need.
We got it.
You do not, okay.
We'll get you a list of ones we don't.
Right, you get her a list, just pass it on to her, what you need.
Yeah.
Okay? And she will assign someone in her department to secure those.
For me, okay.
I just want to point out, I mean, Mayor, that while we appreciate the SOPs, and, and that helps us to make sure that our house is continuously maintained, I want to stress to this board, it's Mr. James here, that the priority is getting these audits fixed. Now, if you guys want to come back and work, it's, you know, SOPs going forward, but there are other matters that these audits impact. And so, I, I, I would just stress that, you know, the board understands, and you all understand, that the audit is the priority. Not necessarily we are, but we are. Particularly if they're billing for those as a main branch.
Right, well, we have two teams, there's a B team and an A, uh, they're two.
Working on, I don't know, everything that's, so.
Right.
Okay. Select.
I mean, working hand to hand, giving you good, uh, help, like, wanting to give the body with the information on the time with that, or is not the body?
No, they are, she's very good, she's very helpful, yeah, sure is. And she, you know, she's trying to figure things out herself, me and them, so. It's gonna work a important relationship.
Any other questions? None, thank you all for your update.
Appreciate it.
Okay, Water Company of America, Mr. Johnny Dupree, you should have the document there from Water Company of America. Uh, Mr. Johnny, I did my best in your absence the other, but I fell short. So, I told them that I would get you to come and speak to the report, the draft report, initially draft report, you submitted, and we went over, because I'm not Johnny, and I can't do it the way Johnny does.
Well, everybody else is Johnny, so, yeah. How you all doing?
Good.
Thank you, appreciate it, bro. I see you got Colonel on the, here, that call over there.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
She's a good person, you got, you got the big. Yeah, Mike Williams, who's here with me. Mike, uh, Mr. Mayor, Anthony Good, and myself, he came on the office support team.
And Mr. Ted.
And Mr. Ted, that's right. We brought a, a closeout report, uh, that we will amend, because of the work that we did Tuesday, last Tuesday. Uh, the report actually, uh, shows how many, you look at the first page, tells us how many. All the meters we found, inadequate meter reads, illicit services, unbilled services, unbilled garbage. Since that time, though, uh, Mike came with Janika, the, uh, water, uh, it's like, it's the water meter installed. And they actually went to those, uh, water meters and actually made them talk to each other. They weren't, uh, they're not gonna adjust. You know, when I first, when we first came here, I told you there's three reasons why Water Company of America exists. One is institutional knowledge that you don't, don't have, that there's people that were working in, in here, and they left, and they didn't leave the knowledge at their head. The other reason, uh, manpower, you don't have the people out there to do the work there. And the other reason was, uh, lack of experience. And so, when Mike came with the meter installed, they actually showed, uh, Janika here.
Yeah, so, so basically, we found everything, but they had a couple of them, if you look on the second page, uh, where it says faulty meters, so number five, eleven, corrected number five, five, not corrected number five, six. So, the meter, um, rep, he came out, and he went with Janika, myself, and the guys out in field. And we went to those meters, water, and basically, all of us was, they just had to get rebooted. The new, the new meters they got installed, the AMRs weren't set up right. So, he got on his end, Janika got on her end, they reset everything, all the building, it got corrected. And that was it, so.
But about that, all those things that were not corrected are not corrected, except for, uh, the illicit services, there were forty-three. Uh, there were twenty that are corrected. Uh, the other twenty-three are showing vacancies, uh, or whatever. It just means that, uh, somebody's familiar. When you say you need to go out and find it, if it's vacant, if there's extra youth, they're not, they didn't make that correction.
Yeah, you just pass a lot, see if someone live there, check the water meter, pop it up and see if they cut the lock or turn it on manually, that's what we found.
And that's, you found a lot of that, not only here, but in other cities, where they cut the water off, they cut the, they cut the lock off, and they got free water. And that's some of the stuff that you have to, but you got a bridge out there, that was something that we, we give you the known addresses, and then you go in, and you, uh, you look at it.
Okay, so, Mr. Dupree, on page five, outstanding issues needed to be addressed. Those are some of the concerns that, that the board had.
Page five. So, you're talking about the dialysis clinic, apartment complex?
That's, uh.
Yeah, we, we collected those too.
They were, they were corrected too.
That's what we did too.
And that's when master meter came out?
Correct, yeah, that's, that's when master meter came out, and, um, everyone that we went to, like I said, everyone we went to, master meter got on his computer, Janika got on her phone, they fixed everything on his end, she fixed everything on her end, got all that straight. Uh, one of the properties, uh, it was a housing authority, uh, when they installed the, the meat, the new meter in the AMR, the, uh, the AMR is the, the radio units where they, the readers can pass by and get remotely. So, they installed the AMR, but they, they did the tie-in at the top of the, the sewer main, so the kids in the neighborhood cut the, the cord and dislocated the, the AMR. So, we actually had the guys go to the shop, install a new one, install it down there, so it moves down, and that's where, to that operator as well.
Okay.
So, basically, Mayor, everything that, uh, that we found has been corrected, except for those unbilled. So, we'll give you an amendment, uh, about closeout report, showing that those things have been corrected.
It'll just take maybe a little bit for the updated bill to go through, but, you know, once it goes through, I'll give it to Janika, we can email her on board.
Did that answer most of your, your question?
Okay, have you had any, uh, issues with our department, uh, providing any assistance from a utility building? You know, did you find any?
The only, the only contact that I had been to Janika, when she's, when I answered questions, she'd answer them, by any type of information you give. So, I, I don't have any.
So, you had good cooperation?
Oh, yeah, I worked, I worked directly with Janika and everybody, Janika, Eric, all these guys, I never had a problem, no. And every time I needed something, Janika was texting me or emailing me, Eric's guys are right there, and we haven't had any issue.
We really couldn't have done the work if we don't have some kind of cooperation with people who actually know what's going on, and know the follow-up that you have. So, we have to work together, it's, it's not gonna work. We actually been working together, if you look at the first page, uh, we actually sort of worked here.
They have it last summer.
You know, July, I think, of, uh, it's been there a year. Uh, we actually.
July first?
July first, we actually got the contract on May fifteenth, and then July first, we actually got the notice to proceed. And so, again, June thirtieth, but we, we still got that, the cost of the fee that you had, with some of those meters that we had been cut, but whoever cut them, we made to move them and also to make that connection, uh, for this.
And, and also, when we were there, um, you know, the master meter guy explained to us and Janika and God as well, you know, a couple of things, table for this and that as well, so, we got some extra knowledge as well, the whole time, so.
We're turning to a training, and things that they really didn't know, and, and really, uh, there's a reason for them to know. But now, if they're trained on what to look for, and I mean, so it's turned out, you could say, that, uh, that all didn't cause you that, they all came to trade, it didn't, they needed to do free.
But yeah, but they gave us no issues, I text Janika and said, hey, we'll come out there. With the master meter guy on this stage, she said, fine, everybody was, when you showed up, everybody was there. So, nobody, no excuses, no nothing, we haven't had any problems with anybody.
Board members?
I got a question.
Selectwoman McGinnis. What do we owe you? What do we owe Water Meter Company of America for what you've done?
Well, when we send you the file, when we send you the file, the, the.
There's a $26,000 number here, is that gonna be close?
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be close, be close, yes.
Will you half of that?
Yes, sir.
Yes, for the remaining of the contract, which will be four years.
Two months for four years.
That's correct, son. Now, that's what you're meant, if anything changes with one of those businesses closed, and you don't receive any money, well, we don't, you don't receive any, we don't receive it. Uh, and so, we only get what you receive when you build it, if we have, uh, we look at your software, if we have, we can look at it and see when you build it, how much you need.
So, we have somebody monitoring it, so all these fines, our bill instead, we're gonna look into it. So, say for example, something happens with the, the hospital, and we'll know all of a sudden that's, that's off, you know, and then we'll get a call down here and say, hey, we think something's off. The meter might have went bad, Janika might have caught it, y'all might have swapped that meter out, we would just need the new meter info, so we got to be prepared.
And it's really kind of good, because you got another set of eyes, but you get it, so it like pops up if something happens that you may not know.
In your, um, experience doing this around the state of Mississippi, like, some of these people have not paid a water bill in three years. They're very large amounts of money.
It's not unusual.
Can the city bill them for that two, two or years of, if you estimate?
That's up to you all.
I mean, is it legal, in your opinion of doing things with others?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, selection you have. It's plus the mayor, so, I've always told it, uh, majority win. It, it's totally up to you. In Pittsburgh, when they found that, uh, this company was taking corn and turning to ethanol, they said that was a company, the company wrote, and it's numbered here, the company wrote a million dollars to the city, and then they started charging $790,000 a year for the water, soon as they were doing it. So, it's really kind of up to you, what you decide that you want to do, you know, uh.
Because my, my math, what I'm doing right now, I'm fixing, we're fixing to pay you over $600,000 over the next four years. And that's money, that's half of what we have not collected in the last three years. So, these people have been getting free services, I mean, you know, you start adding up the numbers here, and you're talking about some big numbers.
Well, it's not totally free, there's something just not what they, the fact share, that's what I'm saying.
It's having a lot of water bills.
Well, the way I look at it, though, you can't. You can't be penalizing what you don't know. If they, you didn't know that they weren't paying it for sure.
I do now, but I want to know if they can, if they can, we can send a bill to the hospital, because they haven't paid a water bill in three years.
Well, I think that's, if you have a question about that, I think you need to probably call the state auditor, one of them. I do know that there's some who have done that, but I, I'm not gonna tell you that you can't.
I know, I'm in your experience, I don't mean to interrupt, I'm just saying your experience, and y'all, y'all did it a lot more than we have.
It's just gonna come to the city and, uh, property.
It really is.
It's, it's up to the city property.
And it is a big company, but the lowest amount, what you found, the city and the company sit down and talk. And you can come to a meeting of the, of the matter. And I think that's, to me, that's the best way to do, uh, if they're good corporate citizens, and they're doing well, and they're poor people, that you sit down and you talk to them about, this is what we found. Because nine out of ten, most of those companies know whether they're paying that fair share or not. And a lot of them put that money aside already, waiting on you to, to call them. But that's what I would do.
Any other questions?
All right, Mayor, we'll see you, we'll send you a file report with everything except those, more of the time.
Okay, do that.
Okay, y'all have a blessed week, okay?
You too, man, and thank you.
Thank you all. See you, I mean.
Neil Shaker, your voice is Gary.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you should see that in your package on the start of page twelve.
This the wastewater treatment plant, that should be our final enforcement project. Should be final. That that project.
Before you move that, uh have everything been completed as relates to that project?
So the pay item work has been complete, we've got a couple of pumps that started to do. And it's uh CSI control systems, gotta come in there and do some uh work on the control panel for the fountain screens. Uh that's that's what we're waiting on to finish up that project.
Okay. Any questions about the wastewater treatment plant? Okay, move on.
All right, second one, Delaware Avenue, um you seen the uh paving is uh complete. Uh I expect them to actually finish up tonight with paving, um then they'll start their cleanup. So if you've been seeing a good bit of material, um letting in the in the gutters or anywhere like that, they have not done their cleanup, they will do that, they'll start on that tonight. Um so paving will be finished tonight, um everything looks good, uh looks looks good on as far as uh, you know, how how the road is riding, we've been very pleased with the work so far.
Okay, don't they have one or two more sides, three?
Yes, sir, they'll finish those tonight. They've got the uh north side of Marion, I know, and uh which one other one. Um down there at Michigan, they've got that as well.
Okay.
And then the last thing that they'll have is the permanent striking, uh they actually plan on getting started on that next week.
Well, you know, some citizens have been very uh nice with their comments, they appreciate the board uh taking care of the main thoroughfare that we're responsible for, uh they really appreciate uh us doing that. So I just wanted to share that with the board because I'm getting those calls and I'm getting those uh conversations about how proud they are of us taking care of Delaware Avenue, so that you all know that, okay? Continue.
Next one is the uh Citywide Mill and Overlay Project. Um that project right now, they have finished all of the water line replacements except for, uh they're still working in the Bear Town area. Um I know they are, got some work to do on McComb Street and C C Bryant. Um around the city, you'll see them doing a lot of concrete work where when they put the water outside the roadway, where they bust up sidewalk or something like that, that's where you're seeing a lot of that uh concrete work and a lot of cleanup work as well. So once they do finish up the, all of the water line replacement work in in Bear Town area, um they, Peterson Bowlin will then move in and do the rest of the paving on that project.
Okay, with these striping of streets, especially Main Street.
Yes, sir. So right now, their plans are when he finishes Marion Avenue, which they're gonna start this week, uh they plan on moving straight from Delaware into Marion Avenue. After they finish Marion Avenue, we'll we'll give it uh fourteen days of that security period we've gotta have. And after that, he's gonna move in the striking crew to Marion and catch up all the striking on the overlay project. That doesn't include Delaware because Delaware is a separate project.
Okay, any other questions from board members? None?
Uh I got a question.
Go ahead.
Have you looked at the tonnage on Delaware, where we at?
Yeah, we're we're gonna have, we're gonna be under, we're gonna have under on there. Uh I'll know tomorrow with the final. Asphalt, the citywide.
Okay.
Something possibly could do in front of McDonald's right out here.
So that's already approved with the overlay project. They'll do Marion and then they're gonna move over and get that.
Yes, sir. Okay, select one.
Okay, Mayor, uh what about Wall Street, at the end of Wall Street, that part hasn't been done?
Paved.
Paved.
Yes, sir. When they, when they uh finish the water line placement in Bear Town, Peterson Bowlin moved in and did that paving, and that's part of what they got finished.
They gone back to Wall Street?
To Wall Street, yes, that's right.
Select McKay.
Um so Sully McKenzie brought it up, so I just want to add some color to it. So um we've already made some uh small change orders to some of the projects. Um when you look at the bid packages, you'll notice that the citywide overlay project better asphalt price than the Delaware project. Mainly this is a big percent of our own project and Delaware projects that the uh sewer water line guys bring right. And so if we do, when we do, the Delaware project comes in under budget, we've already allocated those funds. So I'm gonna ask the board that we allocate those funds all over into uh Citywide Mill and Overlay um onto that project, so it has better pricing. We may want to look around and see if you have one block, half a block, it's not too much, but maybe we could get another block or intersection out of the project for something to put in back your mind.
Well, let's see how it's gonna. Then make that decision. Select McKay.
Uh McComb Street, the cobra that was in the middle of the road that bottomed, it's about to collapse in. Um how's we gonna handle that again? Or is that something that we need?
So we haven't, we have not uh addressed that yet. Um I could get a price from Green Brown with that cost. You know, we did that one on the alleyway over there, it was around, it was around, I believe forty, uh it was forty-seven hundred or something like that, so around five thousand probably we're gonna be talking about. So but I'll I'll get a price from them.
Yeah, I think that.
It is, it's gonna create a bigger process and something, and a gas line. On um. Wow, that's. The one that was old in the ditch. My role. Okay, my role.
Was that something a gas company has to do because it's exposed, that it's, you know, the ditch itself washed it out, of course, we're not looking at that.
That's right.
Now, how do we address that issue? Is that something a gas company should be looking at or something that, something works has to address or something?
I think the first thing to do would just be to address it, they may they may not know about it.
The gas company.
Yeah.
The gas company. I mean, I'd rather. Yeah, that's my whole point, yeah, because it's a, it's it's a.
They may not care if it's not leaking.
Yes, he is, he was out there, but then I ditch.
Also, they're called up.
Yeah, we we really get that, I I would love to have that prior to the paving, because I think that's gonna be a nightmare on the end, on the side of the end of this project.
All right.
Okay, any other questions? None, thank you, Mr. Garrett.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Green, you got two coming up. City inspectors being allowed to open carry.
Hmm.
I think that's a good for Henry, I would do it for him.
I would not do that. Uh so I don't want to create a, I guess, a uh, create my own narrative behind open carry. Uh so something that my inspectors have brought to me a couple of different times. Uh certainly probably happened after a certain situation in the area. So I did bring them with me to kind of defend why, give you all the why, and uh then I guess I'll express kind of how I feel about it after.
Well, yes, we need to hear why they feel they need to have open. So we invite them to come up.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is James Horace, fire inspector, and Mr. Washington and myself, we have to be called out on a lot of different things all over the city. For us homeless or just going for a parked car within a tag it to be removed from streets. We get a lot of looks and a lot of talk to about these vehicles or houses or homeless people or anything of that such. And myself being a twenty-three-year veteran, that don't sit well with me when people wants to make advances and stuff like that, and I don't have anything for protection in this world we live in right now. We don't know what's gonna happen from day to day. Me doing fire inspections at people's business, if I have to go in there and tell you, hey, look, you can't do this, you can't do that, it's gonna cost you this much to do this in your business. If I tell you, you go, gotta spend ten thousand dollars on a suppressive hood system, you might look at me good before I leave or anytime after, after you see me. So in order for us to do our job all over the city at any given time, we get a call, we out there, we out there by ourselves. Sometime we could call police officers to be there, and we call them and say, hey, we got a incident with homeless people, all right, give us a moment. That moment, we're there, it can go left, it can go left real quick. If we don't, with open carry, they got lethal and non-lethal. If we are able to carry a non-lethal, which is a purple ball gun with looks, and if I hit you with that purple ball, it's gonna mess you up for thirty, forty minutes. I, that's how for me to get away from you or get you in cuffs or something to get away from you. So either or would be good for us to get, for an open carry.
All right, that is uh Mr. Horace was stating, uh Mayor, board, um we we do just have some concerns, some things that we run into in the field. Uh we, like I said, we deal with homeless people, we get calls on abandoned properties, we have to go on properties, you don't know uh who you're going to run it to, you don't know what you're going to run it to, you don't know what you're going to find. Uh but there's a lot at at play here for us not to have no type of defense. I know people say, well, call the police, you 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 may can't get to your phone to call the police, you may not have opportunity to call the police. Uh and what we're, we're asking to just be, you know, considerate of of the jobs that we do. We've had incidences to where we've gone into uh homes to where we found uh young high school girl, parents didn't know what she was, found in an abandoned home with with three more uh guys. Uh parents been looking for, you know, what she was, but we we run it to her because we left real fast, you know, because we was running and ran up on property. Uh you you run into incidences of where you go to people's homes and tell them, hey, that tree is rotten, you need to get it cut between the next fifteen and thirty days. Telling a person that that don't have the phones, looking at three, four, five, six thousand dollars to cut tree, that's not gonna sit with them. Uh we we living in a time now to where uh we we say be safe or something like that, but I I think we need to be more careful as people, uh not looking to use anything, but you need some line of defense. But I say, uh there are other agencies that we know of that does have carry weapons and they're code enforcement officers, some of our law enforcement and code enforcement, uh we would get to what we would have to do to try to get it, uh we understand that there's a type of pain that we would may have to take to go to for the academy when it comes to shooting or something like that, uh which myself and James are already considered carry, perfect carry. Uh so but that's that's what we're asking uh for the board's consideration. I know it's liability, uh when it comes to the city, I look into all of that, we all talked about it, but it's still being liability if somebody kills us with our families, you know. So what what would it take?
Okay, now, before we start, Mr. Henry, let me hear your your side on this.
Uh certainly, like you said, it's not uncommon, uh like we go to these trains all the time, inspectors from all over, you know, uh very far, have weapons the entire time in the train, I would say, why can't, why do you, you know, I think we go human. You know, it's not uncommon for inspectors in municipalities to carry. Um I will say that I'm not completely convinced that we need to carry. I've had some incident situations they've had, I responded to homelessness, uh I walked up on people, uh somebody had a sewer leak, this is when I've been uh full time with searching for a uh code compliance officer. Um struggling to complain about leaking sewer on a property. And when I got there, uh it's a young individual out there, um and we parked, you know, nineish in the morning. We parked along the side of the road, took just a second to hop out, kind of collect his paperwork and stuff. And then we hopped out, he already had a knife in his hand. Now, he didn't charge me with the knife or like, you know, cut me with the knife, you know, he didn't act like he was gonna do any harm to me, right? He never put the knife up, knife was probably somewhere around about twelve inches long. Never put the knife up, I had another inspector with me, I didn't approach him, I didn't get probably no further than saying, here's the mayor to him, and had a conversation with him, stayed close to the truck, asked him if he was anyone in the home that could speak in reference to the uh leaking sewage. And um he said, I don't know, let me go see. Uh so he goes inside, I tell another inspector, if he comes back out, if he sees that knife, we gonna leave. So he comes back off on the porch, again, he never put the knife up, he still got it. I said, all right, I see, that's enough of me, we hopped in the truck and drove off, you know, so they do encounter and come to uh come in contact with people that, um you know, mayor may not get mad, I I'm still, again, even with that story, not necessarily convinced of it. Uh that's why I kind of, you know, I brought it to you all because in the, in the end, uh it will be a policy, like board has the right policy of, or approved policy rather. So um I kind of gave them a, I guess you'd say a hard no, a couple of times, but they keep coming back. So I said, you know, I'll do my part and, you know, let you all pitch it to the board, basically, so.
Okay, board member. I select the model. Uh have you had any recorded incidents of violence or injuries to any of the inspectors?
Uh not while I've been here, no, that probably that probably was the worst one that I know of now, you know. Had Steve Simmons still be here, he probably maybe have some slight look, slightly worse than me, he was here for a long time, but um since I've been here, that's probably worse than that.
How long have you been?
Uh I'm going into your seat.
Any other board member, select one.
Well, I'm quite convinced that you don't wait for something to happen. And I understand they're saying, I think everybody should protect themselves because today people are really stressed, a lot of mental issues, you don't know who's gonna be prepared and not prepared. And I've seen code officer, coding officers who uh weapons as well. So I don't mean protecting yourself, you wanna go home with your family just like the next person, and that's how I feel about it.
Okay, select McKay. Um if you answered my liability question, I thought you had did a really good job answering the liability question, but it's two-sided. You know, from my seat, I'll pick the city's perspective. And I think, good job. Um you all mentioned training, uh I'm I'm all for it, and I just want to get the verdict right. Um I am interested, Henry, you know, pro con it, we heard of the big list of pros of the risk, you know, what what are the cons that you know of? What makes you be reserved about it? Is it just the fact of it may not be hit?
Uh I guess we could say just mainly the liability part of it. Again, I think tensions are heightened if I approach someone and I physically see a weapon, right? Um I even went as far as saying, you know, maybe a question for your senior attorney or maybe uh chief or assistant chief of helpers, for them to conceal carrying. for them to conceal carrying, where you couldn't actually see the weapon. Um, I think that would keep them, you know, if approved, uh, it would keep people from, hey, man, what you doing with that gun? Because when we come, we don't necessarily look like police officers, because we don't have a uniform on. So, you know, we already in very tense situations. So, I think a weapon, if you do have it, uh, again, agreed to, that it should be concealed and not open. Now, I'll put open on here just, you know, to kind of, we didn't, but.
Um, so you have, are you able to pull policies from other cities that we can work off of?
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure I can, we have, uh, we go to those train. Uh, many proceedings, there are about a hundred people, they all.
I, I would be a big favor, favor of the concealed, uh, the reason is, is it has advanced training in it. And for them to have a concealed permit, uh, which I think you'd have to have to be able to do this, they would have to go through more training. Guaranteeds of training before, uh, giving this opportunity. Board members, anybody else? See the policy first.
Uh, excuse me, excuse me, everybody, follow the same procedure, this mayor, senior attorney.
Uh, I, I will say that code enforcement is not one of the listed. Uh, there are certain positions, uh, that the state has filled out a statute. Uh, even on an open carry, if the board so chose to do so, there is still enhanced, the enhanced is not specific to low carries. Uh, the city of Oxford has, uh, a policy related to city employees carrying weapons when they are on city property, uh, not going onto someone else's property. Uh, I would ask that the board also, or Mr. Henry, that you guys look into what policies are available for non-lethal uh, responses, and I would also always advise any city employee, if you see danger, go the other way. Because you do not want to put the city in a place that we are considered to be aggressive. So if you saw the knife or any other thing, you know, come back and do your job another day, don't, you know, don't proceed, even if you are carrying a non-lethal, so you always return to being a non-lethal.
With, with that being said, Mr. Green, go find us some policy.
So, you all just want to, need to find something that basically outlines what kind to you.
The other things I know I didn't get with the senior attorney, because a policy or ordinance would have to be written. She would have to be the one, if that is that.
Okay, so.
Mr. Henry, I want to caveat that to say, a seriously situated city, don't go full Chicago.
Oh, yeah, no, we never do, yeah.
Not, not like.
Yeah, 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 it definitely impress us to, uh, compare to some of these, but, question, so we want to actually write a policy, find one, give it to senior attorney, and start on writing one, and I bring it back to y'all would be to feed the city.
Both lethal?
Ain't nothing.
That's it.
I encourage the board to also, uh, contact your insurance carrier to see the implications on insurance and, uh, costs.
Thank you all.
Mr. Henry. Board of quarantine, historical preservation.
Um, so from my listening, Miss Sue Bird, uh, Miss Bird, uh, and it was my fifth grade science teacher. Uh, so, uh, Miss Bird, great person, not necess, don't necessarily know what to say to the situation, I mean. Uh, great person, uh, I've been with her on some, lots of, let's see. Uh, of course, I've been known for a long time, so, uh, I think she, uh, certainly be a good fit being a retired educator also.
Select McCott, are you saying she taught at Southside?
Of course, I think she didn't stay, she didn't retire from there, though, she taught. Yeah.
Who did you call?
Uh, Bird.
Miss Bird. I don't know where you get this. I was trying to figure out where did Sue come from. We're on the agenda, thank you. Powering free, Ms. Jessica.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
I was just, I know that we are all currently, uh, reviewing the budget and our fantasy, what we are, if I can get some direction here, we are going to pursue hiring free or what we are with that.
Select McCott.
Well, first of all, I think we need to, uh, try to get our pay scale check it out, and, uh, because I'm sure he's going, if he has, if we approve, if we approve, you'd hire so many people so far? Have you filled all those positions?
No.
Not, that, uh, so, uh.
Select McCott. Technically, the budget, it's not fully budgeted, it's where it's supposed to be, it's headcount. It's not where it's supposed to be due to the guy. I, in my opinion, I don't think he has the ability to hire anyone because he doesn't have any budget. But, headcount, that's that.
Select McCott.
Excuse, this is the last month of the fiscal year, and we don't know how much money we actually have. Finish the year out. Everything good, no?
You know, the, the board's adamant about this, um, I'm okay with it in, in non-public safety departments. Um, but if the department head or that department feels that they have the room in their budget, and I want to allow them to fix up. AE, dispatchers, fire, uh, court services, uh, stuff like that, but I can't say we're fine, because I don't know, right? But, I don't know, but I still haven't gotten my monthly report done.
But since it's here the last month of fiscal year, why don't we just have a freeze on hiring to the end of this end of this month, so we know exactly what we're starting this year.
Ms. Jessica, what open positions do you have right now? What applications are kind of coming down the pipe? And are we gonna free CA hired?
Oh, you need to. They have a couple of works, uh, dispatchers, I believe Chief Perry has some officers, uh, that are willing to come aboard, but not sure if they can afford some.
So officers, dispatchers, and.
Public works.
Public works, the three most needed spots in that. Auburn. High fire pay still ready, but.
I agree, I think we need freezing for. But I put some numbers, I think that would be the wise thing to do, to put a freeze on everything, everything, okay?
Well, we need to put that on the agenda and enhance the, the office minutes. Put it on the agenda, okay, alright. Update and discussions, Selecta McKenzie.
Well, we hit part of it just earlier, Water Company America, so I want to do the other part side of that, the zero read meters that we ordered, three or four hundred of them, and we talked about replacing them.
Okay, Mr. Spurlock, uh, would you give us an update on the installation of the additional registers?
The four hundred, yes, that is right.
Alright, so for the next meeting, can we get a report that shows, how long will it take to actually make sure they're working correctly?
That would be the next meeting reading, simply because they just read it, so the next meeting reading starts. I think maybe next week they'll start reading U B, same with last year. So, um, they should be able to get a reading for this upcoming, um, building cycle.
They read on the first, what night?
When do they raise? The night is the second.
They should start reading in the, in next day or two. Selecta.
I, I was, uh, if I'm not mistaken, uh, that they, we was, uh, waiting on some previous meters that were put in the ground to get the update reading, see how they were, uh, count, if that happened, we had some kind of report we were supposed to get back from the, the hundred meters that were put in prior to the four hundred years.
That one's a Janika, that's not a, a Erlock. Mrs. Erlock issue, that's a Janika issue, uh, we need to get the Janika next year. If we don't inform her of that, uh, she can't do something that she's not aware of.
Okay, so the next board meeting, the ninth, will they have read this week? He says they're all on the ground, so they're working. So we reading this week, or do we need to wait till the twenty-third?
About the twenty-third, because all of them should be read by the end.
And you've replaced four hundred?
Four.
Four hundred. Let's just, yeah, let's do it the sixth thing, work session, run a report. Who, who needs to inform someone to draw a report on zero reads?
I can inform.
So do they know, does someone in Water Billy know the four hundred that you replaced, like you, if they have a?
It should.
It's a really, run a report, it shows zero reads, I don't know. Yeah, hope it's not. Okay.
Selecta McKenzie, you got.
Alright, the next, you, you brought it up before about, um, primary elections and the municipal executive committee. In the last election, did Republicans or Democrats have anybody on the ballot for municipal executive committee?
No.
No, so we do not have.
We do not.
Okay, so then we go through the procedure, we go to the county.
We can go to the county, or we can do the procedure that was outlined in the, uh, statute that was given to me by Secretary of State's office.
Right.
And all of it has to be done before January first.
Yeah, the third day, so what I, what I, which is, when I, I talked to, um, Secretary of State Office, the attorney Laura Portman, I think it's her name. She referred me to this code, it says you gotta go to the county executive committee, and then they have to have a convention and appoint.
That they appoint at least two or three of them, then they can appoint the remaining five to me.
And then if that fails to happen, they gotta, they gotta put that in the newspaper, it has to be advertised so that everybody can come. And if that fails, there's another step to it, so, you know, um, and the same thing for Republican side of it, because that's who runs the primary, right?
That's correct.
So, you know, why is this important? You know, because it's going to determine who read, who counts the ballots, because the party runs the primaries, right? And then the city clerk kind of oversees it with ballots, you need to be able to get qualified. And last election, we had a scenario where everybody started getting independents, because they didn't think there was a municipal committee to approve it. So this time, we do not have a municipal committee, so it has, this process has to be followed. And I think we need to start the steps to make sure it gets followed. And I think the mayor has already brought it up twice, and, um, the public decides to have the same thing, it's a Republican primary.
And they have to do the, they have to do the qualifications, they have to qualify on that of the candidate.
You know, it's, it's really, a primary election is really a, a election of your peers running, for the most part, so it's, it's important to you, if you're gonna run for office, that it, um, who the poll workers are, who's counting ballots, right? So, you can leave it at that, so I'm, I'm bringing the attention that, same way the mayor did, I, um, I don't know how, what's the next step? Does this board need to write a letter to the Republican and Democratic County Committee and say, you need to start the process? Uh, it requires you're gonna have to spend money to advertise in a newspaper, according to the code that I'm reading right here. Um, do we go on and just do the advertising for each party so that it actually happens?
I would suggest that we get what I'll say, the attorney, she's read, uh, all the, the statute. Uh, that she would help us to outline the steps that we need to take and move forward, if that's the consensus of the board. You know, I, as you have said, Selecta McKenzie, I've brought it to the attention of the board twice, because I knew that we had a election coming up. Uh, in January, qualifications, the Secretary of State said that all this has to be done before then. You know, I, you know, I'm with you on the same page with you, but I can't make this board move one way or the other. It has to be a majority rule.
So would the pro reaction be, we instruct the attorney to give us some step-by-steps to act on it?
Yes, I think that would be just appropriate, assuming that that, yeah. And does that require, uh, it does not require a board action. By work session, we can give that discussion to you. She got it, okay. Okay, Selecta McKenzie, continue.
Um, going down Lakeview in McComb, um, road condition's very, very bad, been multiple repairs on water lines, sewer lines there. And I mentioned it to Neil Schaper, and he said in their reporting in the past that that was one of the worst utility areas of the city. And I asked him to look into that, and I don't know if he has, or he can give you enough.
Mr. Garrett, would you please come up again?
Um, yes, sir, so, uh, took a look at it, uh, so basically you've got three blocks of Lakeview. Um, it's, uh, White, Bard, Park One, and one to Stewart. Um, the first two blocks, oh, White Street are the worst. Uh, one to Stewart's still not in great condition, but those first two blocks are the worst, worst. Um, just put some numbers together, based on unit prices for the overlay project, um, and those two blocks themselves are around, uh, three hundred and twenty thousand, that's just for one.
And I, I'm sorry, no, you can go ahead, I'm sorry.
The other, uh, what would that be, one to White, one to White was, uh, around a hundred and thirty thousand.
And I didn't take the time. And I didn't take the time to talk to Scott Workshad about it, and I don't want to cold call him, but I, from the looks of the road, they've been out there a lot. So it's just something I want to bring to the board's attention, and I don't want to pave it, because it would be useless. And it's got multiple patches on it now, where it's just gravel. It's one of those things that if we got extra money, it'd be something further to look at.
And this is for information purposes only, would we go about to do the water first? And then proceed?
That could have, right? Yes, and while I looked at, we could get the water line outside of the street.
Selectman Carter.
I just, you know, I can hear this comment happening, I just want to remind the board that Lakeview is not along the lake. It is kind of next to an area, over in the hospital area, there's no view of any lakes.
Lakeview is right there, where they closed off that street to, I think it's Maxine, it runs in that area.
Is there, is there any other? Any other item under the road that you should be concerned about, other than water line, like store, maybe a culvert, or? What I can tell you is all.
It's an area of town that has not gotten any attention in a long time. At this moment, just as an information purpose only, and if.
Not me, would go out there off of, for our strike. Thank you, Selectman McKenzie, thank you, Mr. Garrett. Okay, Selectman Carter.
Were we able to get the appraisals for the Old City jail?
I haven't found those appraisals. I would know, I've looked in the C.A. office, see if they were in files in the C.A. office. I have gone down and involved looking for, have not been able to find.
I think the understanding that I had was, I'm saying it's actually the attorney, I'm guessing. Is that we needed two new appraisals that outline potential environmental concerns. So who, and I think we asked this last time, who kind of goes back to the water meter? Who needs to be directed, who needs to be called, who needs to be hired to get these two appraisals completed? And does that need more action?
Uh, figure your terms. Would that need a board action? I can call. Two of them. Call two, party.
I have one pay scale, I wanted to have it printed. It's, I'm gonna have to push it, because you're gonna need it in front of you for me to explain it. But it's like a teacher's scale, it takes it from the line down to nine line, so it's much simpler. I, I didn't have, I didn't get, so I'll get it printed for next week and have it in front of you.
Okay, keep going.
We get TVs on the wall, TV, look at it. Anyways, bid package for dump truck, so I've got a call from the vendor this week. I, I don't know what department this runs through, may or something, you need to help. We, we did the dump truck, we voted it. According to the vendor, there was a bid package, and then there was no action taken on that bid package. And the dump truck has since been re-bid it out to, to get more quotes to come in. So I guess my question is, why was the first bid package not action?
Well, if I remember when the first time it came out, the board did not approve the dump truck. And then, Selectwoman Isaac brought it back up, and the time span may have transpired for bids. Normally, they are good for only so many days, it may have transpired where that bid was not good. I, I can't answer all of that, I just know the first time, this board did not approve it. Later on, Selectwoman Isaac brought it back up, and the board did approve it. But I don't know the timeframe and the gap there between.
So, okay, let me. So are we saying that the department heads or the city is going and doing bid packages before the board authorizes the purchase?
No, the bid package was already done, we did not, we as a board did not approve the dump truck. And it came back, so Selectwoman Isaac brought it back up, said, let's revisit the dump truck. And the board revisited the dump truck, and then the board voted in favor of purchasing that dump truck. That's how I remember it, I might not be the correct person, maybe I got something wrong, Selectwoman Isaac.
Man, I thought this Emma and Mr. Doug was working on the thing together, that they, that they, Mr. Spurlock. I'm just saying, but I thought Ms. Emma said that she had to get some information, and Mr. Doug said he had to get some information.
I don't remember. And was that also with a reverse?
Reverse auction.
Reverse auction.
I don't know exactly what happened on the person, some person, but I know they had to, I'll be just.
Hey, that's what I'm trying to figure out, because my understanding is, is that we're running the reverse auction after we approved it as a board, and that being voted on a budgetary price. And then they're gonna run the reverse auction, but the vendor felt like they had the lowest price, and they are concerned on why it got thrown out, and now we're doing it again. And they're saying it's only been like a week or two. So if we can get that answer, I'm okay with you in there or something, of, of what happened in the first auction, if it wasn't expected, whatever it was.
This board voted it down, that's what happened, you know, when we was first presented to this board, this board voted it down. It, the majority of the board ruled, the board voted it down. So, so when the board voted it down, it was date, you know.
Procedurally, typically, we approved them to go to reverse auction. So you're saying they went to reverse auction, got quotes, and then brought the final quote to this board back three, four months ago? So vendor's stating that this happened two or three weeks ago?
No, no, no. The original came before this board, and I don't remember all the perks to it, but I know the board voted not to do the dump truck. Then it was brought back maybe a month or two later by Selectwoman Isaac to purchase the dump truck. Okay, so whether or not everything had fallen through the cracks, whatever with timeline, and or the, the, uh, the quote, I don't know. But it would be something that we have to look into.
But if I recall correctly, the first time Eric said he didn't want the truck that was presented, and that was the reason that it was voted down. And is that what it was?
I wanted the dump truck. And he said that, well, you, I didn't want that.
So.
I said, let us go back and research, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to clarify something, I'm with you. And, and yeah, I just need that email, and I think, I think the maintenance manager would have that information. But I just want to clarify, from my understanding, this has nothing to do with when the board voted, or anything like that. This is a internal bid package that someone is accusing the city, I'm gonna put your, let me say. It's saying that the city refused the lowest bid, and now it's bidding that again, someone else. In weeks of each other, not the months that we did it last time. And so I just want clarification on that, not necessarily on, on when the dump truck was approved by the board. Dump truck's approved, facts, done, okay? It's, it's more of how we're purchasing, and if we're purchasing in the right capacity, so.
So disrespectful. Why are they calling you?
Thank you.
Guess they got a card. I think the world goes, I think the world goes around based on relationships. And so, you know, I don't think they're in the point of trying to make a formal complaint or anything like that. And in that case, I believe they need to correct it. I think they're just asking, hey, we made a bid, and we were the lowest bid, why did y'all accept our bid? Say, hey, I don't know, we approved the dump truck, it's a city to buy it now. And they're like, well, now it's back out again.
And we can look, you know, research that, Selectwoman.
Man, I think the problem started when someone else tried, like Mr. Spurlock told us what he needed, him and Mr. Doug told us what they want. Then someone else came up with another idea, what they think, what they should get. And then we brought it back, I said, we voted down, I'm saying, a lot of time, you know, they tell us what they want. But see, sometimes we have other great ideas that we think we know what they need, and sometimes that's not what they need, or, or that's not what they want. And that's how the problem started.
Well, we'll look into it and see what's going on, and get back with you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Spurlock. Mr. Harlan, your item.
Thank you. The improvement to the Edgewood Park area, I got originally two bids, well, Ms. Joyce, got two bids to make just. Because of the dilapidated condition. And there were two bids, but they're not in the package, for one fifty thousand, one for seventy-five thousand. And I would like the board to vote on that next week, as to whether we can go ahead with the fifty thousand dollars and actually put that place in a condition that's better for the group, because it's terrible right now.
Okay, Ms. Joyce, would you come to the podium, please? Ms. Joyce, are we talking about the old Dixie ball field? Okay, there've been discussions about what we're gonna do with the ball field. You have the dugout, all that over there, you have the fencing over there, you have the parking lot over there, we've got a whole lot over there. Okay, and Selectman McKenzie, if I remember you correctly, you said you would like to make, just tear everything down, make green space?
It's not my ward, it's his board.
Well, I'm just, but I'm just.
That's my opinion.
I remember that opinion, okay, Selectman.
The same thing with, you'll tear it all down and make green space until we decide later if we want to do something else.
Okay. Selectman Carter.
Who's the vendor on the quote?
Tom Ellis and Lewis.
Mayor, can you tell us just the quote on the house area?
On the demolition of the dilapidated housing, the.
Oh, tell me which one it is. The, the reason I ask is, it's just, for me, it's very frustrating that, you know, we can demo eighteen houses for sixty thousand, or we can demo four ball fields, not all, but like, I, I just, I don't, I don't understand why that, that is so expensive. I'm totally for it, I hope that we can work with the soccer club that's there and maintain the few fences that they want, which is like very, very few.
They want two, three, and four, ball fields two, three, and four.
They, my understanding is they want just one fence along one side, prevent the ball from on the street.
Well, they said they want to use ball fields two, three, and four, a peon area, and a concession stand, and a storage area.
Yeah, I, I, I'm all for tearing it down, I would like to, I would just like to highlight like three things that, that's stated. A lot of the towers probably need to go, the only things that may need to stay, it's just the concession stands, a few fences along the sides.
Now, the pool is there, everything down, fifteen light poles, everything in.
That's what it was, that was what it was, the retaining wall was on that quote, okay? I, I would ask the board to leave the retaining wall and the fence along, or just leave the retaining wall. I, I don't think it gains us any advantage to return that back to a slope, that's what was so expensive, was removing that huge retaining wall there. And in my opinion, oddly, flat space is, is what people want in parks. And so if you think of there being a liability, there being a retaining wall there, anyone can walk behind the fence and fall off that cliff. So it's the same liability it was with or without the fence. But ask that that retaining wall come out of the quote, and I think you're gonna get a much better number of it, that's what it was.
Selectman.
It's, Ms. Joyce, we have citizens that wants to come over there and play football, they said they have spoken with you a couple times. Like, we plan, plan to have a football team to come over there and play.
Play, stop me about that.
Coach Luke.
You know, if I get a tour, you know.
Okay, now, Ms. Joyce.
Ma'am, sir.
There's a possibility that we need to make the retaining wall. Take the retaining wall out of the quote. But, Ms. Joyce.
Yes, sir.
Would you state to people who, again, who made quotes?
Tom Ellis and Michael Lewis.
Michael Lewis, and Mike Lewis' quote was how much?
Seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five thousand, and Tom Ellis was?
He's fifty, he can change his, the first quote.
Fifty, now, again, this goes back to what Selectman, but I'm taking a different route that he took. We got two quotes, even though Tom Ellis is the lowest, but the other person said seventy-five thousand, just to clean off that. So, a-again, we're going with the lowest quote in reference to this. I just had to make it clear that even though Tom Ellis may be the same person who did the contract for the demolition of houses, he had the lowest quote here to end. Two quotes, two different people, his is the lowest, okay? Regardless, his is the lowest, and it just happens that way. Just want to bring that up. Okay, thank you, Ms. Joyce.
Mr. Harlan.
Yes.
Just, just to clarify, what does this go include? He's going to remove everything, it'd be nothing but grass there.
Nothing but grass, he said that every, uh, the concrete, delete concrete there, I can make you cut.
Well, I, I don't know why it's not in here. I'll just show a picture if you don't mind. I'll come, I hear. Yes, I'll come see you, we can do a map, do like a Plan A and Plan B, where one is everything for the board to vote on, and one is a modified.
Okay, additional lightings, thank you, Ms. Joyce, additional lightings for the city.
When they replaced all the LED lights, then C.A. Myers, we were supposed, he was supposed to get back.
Selectmen, selectmen to determine from where they need additional lighting in their ward. And we never get back to that.
Let me tell you, I I would suggest that each select person. Uh, do a list and get that list to me. And then we can contact energy from that and 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 start to get a price. Okay. I want everybody.
We.
Okay. And that includes you too, Selectwoman.
Okay.
Okay, yours may be some of the same areas that the. But.
Daddy food on the life that's blown.
If they need replacing, yes, just just make sure you.
Oh.
You you separate those that need replacement, okay? Okay, let's move right along. Uh, update on Delton, it's my turn, update on Delaware Avenue and Burke. Uh, have spoken with, um. Um.
Fisher Warren.
Mr. Warren Fisher, uh, as it relates to, um, burying the electric for that block. He gave me a quote of two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, have talked with Josh. Those posts actually belong to AT&T. I have spoken with Josh at AT&T and he is to get back with me and let me know if they can be moved. And if there's a cost to have them moved. Uh, with uh, with energy, the question is who's gonna pay for? To have it buried. Yes, sir, Selectman Cott.
That doesn't include the four lines of cable that's on there as well. As a barrier that was removed then. Um, I I I was working on a plan in the past. Um, I ran into the area. I do think there's some money that could be used, but. Past, I would want to do that traffic study. See if we could go to three or four lanes. Uh, and pull the sidewalk out a whole lane. That would give you another ten, twelve feet off that power pole into the road and make a really wide sidewalk on one side of the road. Um, so I know it's too late for that, but from a design perspective, uh, that was one of the reasons why. Why I was pushing that path was because of the cost of area.
There are very few people who sit around this board that remember when Delaware Avenue was only two lanes. Those poles were there when it was just two lanes. Yes, one lane going, one going one direction, one going the other. It was expanded to four lanes. When it was expanded to four lanes, that's why those poles are not within the guideline. Because when it was expanded, all they did was move sidewalks and put sidewalks around the poles and all that. So, you know, I'm old enough to remember that. I'm old enough to remember when it was just a dirt road, okay? So. Not a horse and buggy now. Okay, uh. Listen, Selectman Holland, we're not gonna talk about. About that, okay? But I'm just saying, I remember when it wasn't there, okay? It stopped right there itself. And then they s- they opened it up, so. I'm just a little old, just a little.
Yeah.
Selectman. Don't talk about age now.
Leave that alone. You guys, I don't ride your horses. But the uh, is it? The light pole, can it be just, if they set another pole and offset it?
AT&T is looking into that. Those are AT&T phones, not energy. So that's why I had to contact AT&T. So AT&T is looking into that and Mr. Josh from AT&T says that he will get back, okay?
Uh, there is a hair of concern. I'm looking at who walks down Delaware. That some of that sidewalk is. Outside of the right way as well. It's very, very tight along the backside of that sidewalk. If that sidewalk. So, that'd be ideal of some type of easement where the property owner can push it back. It'll hate me. That would be most ideal, most cost effective. But there's an issue right there. They need to stretch.
Can we look at a guardrail instead? It's just beyond the sidewalk from the curb.
Like the whole though.
I mean, within that curb, you can put a guardrail, right? Continue with the curb.
It's a curb.
But let's 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 look at some other options, but I just wanted to bring you up because I told you I would look into it. Okay, uh, next, opiate settlement. We got another opiate settlement that came in. I sent it to the city attorney. And I'm gonna let her tell you what needs to be done with that one, just like the other one.
It's the same situation as the other again, remember the opioid, um, matters are different. Men than distributors. And so this is the same as the last time. The last one was Purdue Pharma and the other big players. These are the minor players, so it's authorized to be designed as a settlement.
Another pool of money, might not be a home lot, but every four, five thousand dollars. And it's a, get it every three, four months. Okay? Yes. Selectwoman.
Okay, like last time we used it to purchase, uh, uh, another police car. But this time can we use it to uh, give them some better furniture and they not.
Well, we've already authorized Selectman McKenzie already.
He gave it to the fire station.
He gave it to the fire station.
Police department. But it was so hot.
Okay. We can.
Thank you, my furniture, my travel money next year.
Let's let's uh, find out if we have any left in there already.
I'm not on my terms, okay?
Well, Attorney Jones. Okay. We gonna move on. The school board elected member. Uh, it was brought to my attention that by the newspaper, elected school board position. Uh, it was brought to my attention that it is the responsibility of the municipal governing body. So again, I contacted the Secretary of State's office. Uh, the person there ordered me the information, the statute. That clearly identified it is the responsibility of the municipal governing body to appoint that person. However, that person cannot be appointed until after January the first. Because the outgoing person, uh, term ends on the thirty-first. So we can't appoint that person until after January first. And I'm gonna yield to my city attorney in case there are any questions about that process. Because I read the law, just because I read don't mean that I interpreted halfway decent. But I'm gonna yield any questions to our city attorney. Selectwoman asks.
Uh, yes, ma'am, okay. Okay, we have the uh. The authority to appoint, but that position is for one year that they can honor serve, right? Or is it for four?
It's, they can only serve to the next general election.
The next general election.
Less than a year.
No, less than a year. Selectman Cott.
Um, so I just wanna add a little bit more color to what this this position is. It's the position of the people that are within McColl School District who do not live within the city limits of McColl. And so I I may be incorrect, but I'm ninety-nine percent sure. There'd be a little bit to the south, like one or two blocks, a little bit to the west. And then a whole lot, all of Summit, and then some of the suburbs of Summit. Uh. I would recommend. Uh, if you look to the uh, city of Summit. Uh, I I think that that if they were to recommend someone to us. Because the person would be up for election by the majority voters of Summit. I think it'd be a good opportunity of keeping them involved in our school district. Um, especially now that we have a full foot elementary school up there. That has a five billion dollar project that's open and not being worked on. Um, I would think it's best to put someone in this position who is electable on the next election cycle. And so if we pick someone from the city limits of McColl, you know, they cannot, they cannot be a part of this election. It's a lame duck appointment. Um, so, you know, and from my interpretation, can a elected official from Summit serve in this capacity?
A year.
As long as it's doing. Outside the school district. You know, there there's, there's some pretty strong people on the Summit City Board. Who I think would be very good fit and provide more balance for the McColl School Board than what's currently there. Uh, so, you know, if you were to look at a a Pittman or a or a Keaton Daniels. Some pretty strong vote counts in the last election, uh, that could possibly have that seat one forward.
I just think that, uh, right now, it's important for us to understand what our responsibility is. I think it's, I think it's important that people who live in the outside. Incoherent, unincorporated area of the city of McColl. Uh, that they, uh, would, we acknowledge that we're gonna be looking for. And they can make themselves known and to us that they would like to be appointed. I don't think we need to, uh, talk about a a a person or a position. I think we just. Let us approach it from that way. But I do agree that it needs to be somebody not inside the city limits of be appointed for the. It needs to be someone on the outside. It's not, I do agree on that, but who, uh. You know, it's gonna be left up to this. Selectman Cott.
Uh, and we do have an appointment in March, one of our own appointments in March that come forward. Um, and the last thing is with the renewed, uh, win that we have on social media. I think that, uh, we will be getting better applicants, uh, coming forward for these positions. If, uh, we clearly let the community know what we're looking for.
Yes.
I think we get great candidates all the way around. You understand, it might not be his party, it might be the person of the city, but I think we get great candidates all the way around.
Okay. Handbook. Handbook, we move right along handbook. Uh, we have asked the city attorney to update our handbook. We have a quote from her as it relates to updating handbook. Uh, you have that quote there in front of you. Uh, she's sitting right here to my right. If you have any questions. I'm gonna ask you to direct, make sure you direct them to me before I can direct them to her. This handbook is being overdue. Uh, our former, uh, attorney was to update it. Uh, he did not feel that, but it's something that it's needed and it must for the city of McColl. Or, Selectman Cott.
Did we bill, did we pay any bills to a previous attorney for this service?
No, sir.
Didn't, didn't we? Didn't we send this off to a big firm yet?
We did initially send it to, uh, Sev Dunbar. And then that's when Marcus spoke up and we we canceled that and we turned it over to Marcus. And I hate to use his name, but he was the city attorney and he did not, uh. Yes, so the city attorney, we've asked her to look into it. She's looked into it. She's given us a quote to do.
Put it on the agenda.
Put it on the agenda? Okay, voted up or voted down, all right? You have your, uh, CMO classes. Uh, it came to my website. I printed it up. If you all wanna go, sign up. Uh. Last on my agenda, you should have this package in front of you. Uh, Ms. Sonia prepared the, uh, housing report for the month of June. Uh, you would notice that the original bill was thirty thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-one cents. Sonia saw a discrepancy, uh, nine hundred, six dollars and twenty-three cents. So she's asking that we pay the county twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred, ninety-six dollars and twenty-two cents. You have all the documentation there. Uh, if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. If not, let's put it on the agenda for payment. Nine. Okay. Um, also you should have a package from our city clerk as it relates to the subject. She would like for us to go ahead, set the, uh, public hearing for the budget. If you have any questions, you can ask her, uh, about it. We, when she did everything that you asked her to do. Uh, on page thirty, is it thirty, page thirty? Twenty-nine? On page twenty-nine, you would see there that that she's showing a surplus of one hundred and seventy-six, one oh seven. So this is a balanced budget. We're not in the red. We're actually in black as it relates to. Um, projected revenue versus projected expenditure. She did go in, remove the costs or prorated the cost for reimbursement for that one. She did go in, pull the thirteen employees out of the budget for support services. With with them going to dispatch and prorating that cost. So with everything that you asked her to do, this is where we are right now. Uh, Selectman Cott.
Um. Can you talk about it for a second?
You can.
Um. Can we take the, uh, city clerk, can we take the the surplus and put it back in the buyer? They only have a buyer. Um. Uh, salaries and wages. And then. Is this what surplus? And then the other only question I have is police has a much larger, uh, health insurance increase than everyone else. Um. I I I think that's just an error. It's bigger than twenty percent. It's like forty, like forty percent. So just so you can check on those two lines. Uh.
I'm gonna say let's hold on 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 that. Uh, because we still have the, uh, amount that we're going to have to. Pay as it relates to dispatch. And dispatch has been taken out, but if that can be worked out right now, we're looking at two hundred and fifty-three thousand. Am I correct? Roughly two hundred and fifty-three thousand for our contribution for dispatch. Uh. Uh, so we hopefully. Select Maccard.
Which is a fifty-three thousand dollar increase to the city for what, uh, for budget last year. Once you remove the surplus.
But she wants you to go ahead and because we've got to get this budget adopted by September the fifteenth. We've got to have a public hearing at least eight days before, is it eight, seven days before? Seven days before we adopt it, so, uh, we've got to have a public hearing as well as set the military rate. And, and she is working on the military rate. We don't, we're not anticipating an increase in the military rate at this point. However, we've got to set that military rate. You've got to act on that. So we need to move on that. That's why she needs a day for the public. What day were you looking at?
Monday the eighth.
Monday the eighth, she needs some time.
Uh, Monday thirty, thirty-four.
Four? Monday four o'clock. Eight o'clock on the, on the eighth. On the eighth. You need to get it in the paper or, um, it needs to be in the paper. Can't get it in it for Wednesday. So because paper's only two days, we need to get it in on Saturday. Paper. Is it there? Yeah, Saturday paper.
Oh, okay. I gotta be out of here.
Okay. But we can also go ahead and put it on our, uh, Facebook page and get it out there through, through, uh, the social media. You know, sometimes social media does a better job than enterprise attorney in getting out information.
Oh, how do you get that, David?
That's why. That's a fact. They own, they own it print two, two days.
There are websites with the newspapers. Our social media started tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, just want you to, the attorney is just letting me know she will be by virtue, um, next board meeting.
By virtue, I don't know, in spirit?
She's gonna be calling in. Okay, uh, Ms. Patty and Ms. Emma gave me a note. Those of you who have, uh, iPads and not using them, please turn them in. Okay? Those of you who have iPads and not using them, please turn them in. Okay? Okay.
Yes, sir. It's Chris Paul.
Okay. Okay. Okay, um, is there, is it, is it? Is it time for department head modeling review? Am I missing something? Department head. Everybody don't run up at the same time.
Good evening. Public Works Department of, uh, Compton Miss for August of twenty twenty-five. Uh, we're going as our symbol last month. Street Department seventy-six, ten minutes thirty-one, traffic nine, cemetery's apartment one. Uh, we're going to open last month. Street Department one hundred and sixty-four, ten minutes one hundred and four, traffic fourteen, cemetery's apartment one. We're going to close last month. Street Department one hundred and eighty-two, two minutes eighty. Uh, wireless repair thirty-seven, super parks, some lift stations twenty-one, traffic nine, cemetery park zero. And this city, eight one locate request are two hundred and eighty.
Eighty-one. Two hundred and eighty-eight? Select Maccard.
Uh, who's doing this for you? Meter readers?
Uh, Public Compliance Officer at the form.
Uh, success and barrier?
Okay. Thank you. Next.
Hello, good. Uh, total permits, you put a month, you're forty-six, we had two hundred five one orders. Uh, fifty-five stations, forty-eight real property stations. We have three to open this application. Uh, I don't have the close, I think, because court is this week, when we had hand cut. Start to go good, we had a hundred and five, uh, uh, co-violations. Uh, we closed four in the month of August. Uh, that number in there also includes, uh, uh, the demo properties alone as well as, uh, sign function. So they remain open until sometime they expect. Uh, specifically, certainly the budget, uh, permit revenue obviously is fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And we have, uh, year value is two hundred, roughly two eighty-sixty-eight. Sixty-sixty-eight? Two sixty-eight, sixty-seven. We hope we have budget in next year. We have two fifty on budget. Actually, another twenty days, two seventies. He'll get two K next month.
Yes.
Mr. Hope tonight, you know, looking back.
Select woman asks.
Yes, I think you do a follow-up of Mr. Ashley on that property, like leaning up.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Uh, my apologies. Uh, he did, he actually took it, took it to sell video. Clean the property out, so. We'll, I'll contact him tomorrow. We'll make this, this, we'll document.
You have a copy of the contract?
I do have.
That's what he was supposed to bring to me.
To me, yeah.
Well, when you talk to him and ask him for that copy.
We do. He, he was working our campus, I did. He, he got my stuff in the street.
Did he leave it for us to pick up?
Uh, I'm believing so. Uh, I don't know what's out, out there at this point, but he said, I gave him the address to, uh, I don't know, forty-eight. He said he has fifty bags that are loaded on a trailer that are supposed to be going to a man. Now, he was not okay to leave it for us to be, but so.
The debris?
Yeah.
He put all the debris up on the street for us. Probably worth to pick up.
We had lots of bagged up.
And we don't do that.
Right.
So what is the people there? Were you hired or they were?
They moved it to the street.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, let's bring, while we're dealing with that, don't we have ordinance relating to that being cleaned out and put on the street?
Yeah, we do. So, uh, it's, it's a lot of gray areas that we, we really need to clean up.
Pull up that ordinance in order that our city attorney and you can fine tune it.
Okay.
And cause we need to make sure that when people clean out, uh, apartment or clean out a house, that if we got to pick it up, they're gonna pay for it. Okay, cause that, you know, it's just, it's just too much for us to have to, to eat when, when we have to pick it up and take it to the transfer station and pay for that ourselves. When it's their responsibility. Uh, Select Mollins then Select Woman. Adjusting our location, make sure you remember that we have those three overgrown lots on Summit Street. And that's the address. Select Woman Bailey.
Didn't we talk about bond that, that, um, the other day? Child, we get to it.
Uh, I did not personally. We, when we were talking, I didn't mention, we al, we already issued, uh, require contractors to turn in, uh, assured bond. It's not the same, but we don't have the language for.
Not that one. Um, on Mr. Ashley's up there, said a two hundred and fifty dollar bond.
Said, that bond for the contractors or something.
Right, so we, we don't have one specifically for, I guess we would say that type of work. Uh, we require bonds, but don't have one for that.
Well, I was not looking to give you one.
Uh, yeah, we most certainly can. I know that, uh, I'm gonna say one of the main issues is most folks don't clean up their property anyway or don't agree to, right? Uh, and when I say clean up, what I mean is, uh, demo, right? Cause demo is a chunk of change depending on the property. So, uh, certainly people get to it, uh, but I, I think we'll have very few people that is, you know, who are gonna put a permit and say have it tear down. And that's just basically, you pay us.
Select Maccard.
Um, I, I, I will say Select Woman, you spoke of overgrown lots. Um, there is a, a line item changing this budget of increasing his demo budget, which is what he uses to mow lots, fix up lots from sixty thousand to a hundred thousand in the budget. I think nearly we've been spending about seventy-ish on demos. Um, there, I think that it could possibly be an opportunity for us to influence and direct, uh, him to help us mow some of these lots that have been demoed. Get some of that extra funds, uh, go forward. A little bit of maintenance cushion. Thank you.
Oh, uh, success and barrier? Uh, success, uh, the, uh, demo is, uh, okay to, uh, start over on, um, or? I don't need you there. Over on, uh, when we were just talking about the house, I can't through the street. Oh, Liberty. We're gonna start over here. Uh, it's a couple of properties up there on Liberty. So we're gonna start on there. So, there's a series. Uh, barrier is in past the summer. I'm here from the west, so we'll have to, uh, figure out how you go over your own lot.
Let's bring, I do want to, uh, say that your department contacting my neighbor down the street from me caused him to tear down and demolish and haul off uh, that house.
And I believe losing it, that's seeing the hundred can take you there.
Okay, uh, to your, next.
Good evening, again.
Good evening.
The city of Macomb Recreation Department by the month of August, uh, Otterius Park, contract rentals, MLK, we had four rentals. And we had our third annual spelling bee. And I'd just like to thank the mayor and Select Woman Bailey for their part in making it a success. I applaud you. Thank you for what you did. Uh, Alpha Center, we had two rentals, Ford Park. We had, uh, Brady's football registration and certification and the league will start this Saturday morning if you wanna come at ten o'clock at the MoP purpose field. Uh, fall soccer registration, fall soccer league is going on now. Monday is the Thursday, five forty-five, six forty-five. There is no fee to enter.
And, and, and we got one of our board members?
We do. He has a nice game.
Yeah, they only won by one goal tonight. We usually win by seven or eight. Okay?
This is funny. Man is the win. They need their coach back.
Uh, Kuwait's Fall Ball League registration, um, ended Friday. Uh, upcoming events, open gym, it's gonna be fall break. Uh, Christmas parade registration is coming up in November and our basketball league registration is coming up in October. Vehicle story is the pickball courts are open today.
Oh, nets and everything? Nets and everything?
Nets and everything. Some new signage, everything. Uh, barriers is still, I'm working on my playground and stuff. They say government works slow.
Okay, before you leave singing, please.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They're open.
Comes out there. Okay, is there anyone else? Nothing else? Nothing else? Meeting adjourned.